But everybody please rise for potential leaders. At the flag of the United States of America, and its republic, it stands, one nation, under God, in the soul, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Wilson?
Here.
Kolesikoff?
Present.
Koch?
Here.
Noshewski?
Here.
Mudd?
Here.
Monkhausen?
Here.
Spears?
Present.
Teiling?
Here.
Corns.
Okay, we do have a forum. There are a couple amendments to the agenda on our mayor's report, items number two and three, the city administrator employment contract and a chief of police employment contract. I'd like to move those to the end of the meeting after the executive session. We may or may not take action on those tonight. Under Public Works Committee Report, item number three, the progressive energy natural gas proposal, we'd like to table that until the next meeting. Is that correct, Mark, until the next meeting?
Yes.
Any other amendments to the agenda?
I have one. I'd like to table item number two, the minutes of the city council, May 24th. I have several corrections. I don't know if you'd want to go through them now or table them. I can give them to the clerk.
We can table them and you can submit it to the clerk.
Okay, so I make a motion to table number two of the consent agenda minutes of the city council, May 24th, 2011, to the next city council meeting.
Motion should be for all of them, right? Following amendments. Can you remove that motion for items two and three under mayor report and number three under public works?
I'd like to table all the mentioned amendments to the agenda to the next city council meeting.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Alvin Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. Okay. We do have a couple of presentat-- well, one presentation tonight for two different officers. We do have presentations for Officer Kolowski and Officer Ketchmark for AIM certificates of appreciation for DUI enforcement. The gentleman, if you'd like to come forward. We're closing, aren't we? In case I heard a word and we're not going to allow. You're always a good round. This year, our two top highest DUI arrests were on that, Ketchmark and Officer Kolowski. As most of you know, DUI is one of those things that's very important to see here to keep our road drivers off the streets and make it safer and soundier. So you gentlemen did an outstanding job last year and we appreciate it very much. Certain appreciation and recognition of the level of DUI enforcement. Officer Tilly Kolowski, Yorkville, highest highest table ever. Officer, thank you very much. If you have anything to say, thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any public hearings? Do we have any citizen comments? If so, please step forward, state your name for the record and sign the sheet up there.
Do I need to spin that around here? Thank you. My name is Dave Richman. I'm here to speak on behalf of 802 South Bridge Street. We've talked about this for many months. It, I believe, originally came up in January and Public Works Committee meeting in February. It's been discussed a lot. There's been, I realize there's a lot of different issues, complex issues, and just want to briefly talk about a couple of them and ask for your support on this this evening. I realize that the city is, your concern is what liability is this to the city, the groundwater ordinance? Because next year, when IDOT widens Route 47, they're going to tear up the contamination that is in the right-of-way, eliminate the sanitary sewer, the no further remediation letter is given, and everybody is happy ever after. So the question that's been presented to me, Dave, was, well, why don't the family just wait for that? Because then it doesn't cost anybody any money, the city has no liability, the no further remediation letter is not issued until after. IDOT does their work next year. The problem is the economic situation of that property. To fill in a couple cracks out there, the contamination is in a sanitary sewer which is in the right-of-way. The sanitary sewer is not out in the roadway. It's in the right-of-way underneath the driveway. The environmental engineer has said that they don't believe it's a large plume of contamination. It's pooled next to the sewer. So with that in mind, the question was posed, Joe Wyrode had posed a question to the Illinois EPA, if the city had to dig the sewer up, because the roadway's not an issue because it's five foot down, and if you had to dig up the roadway, you'd never be five foot down, or we'd hope you wouldn't be. But, so it's the sewer is the real issue. If the sewer broke, sewer cracked, what happens within, between now and next year when Route 47 is widened? The state of Illinois EPA said, and through email conversations back and forth, that what would happen was the contamination, there's different levels of contamination, residential level, well, I should say different levels of cleanup, residential, industrial, and then dirtier than that. It's all industrial level cleanup. If the dirt was dug out of that spot and you worked on the sanitary sewer, the Illinois EPA says you can throw the dirt right back in the hole. You don't have to haul the dirt off, you don't have to pay any additional expense to clean up the dirt, you can throw it right back in the hole because it's industrial level cleanup. So I know that was a concern of, well, if we had to haul the dirt away, how much would it be? Nobody really had a dollar amount figure from that. So the question back again is, why don't the family just wait the year? What happened was last year, well, actually about two and a half years ago, when Pat Beersley passed away, his children inherited this property. Children, our nephew who's in the United States Air Force, my nephew, he was in the U.S. Air Force, he's 25 years old in Florida, he's, he's not coming back to work at Flatsoil Tire or ever run that place. His two daughters who are in their mid twenties, both have families, they live in Indiana, they're not coming back to the community. The family is, what's happened is, the business right now with Flatsoil Tire is being rented, the business is in a negative cash flow position. There is a mortgage on the property, and every month, the kids pay out $800 more than they take in. So the question becomes, how long do they hold on to the property? How long do they continue paying out $800 a month? Because at some point, and I'll tell you, at some point soon, that property becomes underwater. And when the property becomes underwater, as we know, a good businessman, number one, stops paying, won't pay property taxes, Flatsoil Tire goes out of business because Flatsoils who wants to buy the property, they have a contract to sell to the Flatsoils, they can't sell it to Flatsoils without the no further remediation letter, and then the property becomes in disrepair. And then economic developer has to work hard again to someday get a property back in there or a business that pays sales tax, pays property taxes, and is a, not real, an eyesore to the community, because we all remember what that gas station up there looked like for many, many years. So while I know the liability to the city issue, I hope I fully address that and you feel comfortable enough to accept whatever, if it had to get dug out in the next year before Route 47 was expanded, your former engineer, Joe Wyrode, has recommended you pass this, groundwater ordinance, and I just, again, ask that you think of also the benefits of all the Flatsoil Tire and all the good business up there and to continue working forward. And I ask that you vote in favor of this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richman. One last, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. My name is Amy Sessich. I live in Wintry Village. I'm here to talk to you today a little bit about being in favor of the bike trails, or what we should probably be calling them is the shared pathways. They are not just bike trails. I think we talked about it last week with the quagmire of this $30,000 now from IDOT. And I think it, with that, I think you all should really consider that a lot in your voting tonight. People keep saying that they don't want the bike trails, but we do. There are people that want them. I am one of them. They are out there. So please consider that when you're voting. I live here as a resident. George, Carlo, you speak for me as well as the people that are negative about these trails. So I just wanted to stand up tonight and be one of those people that said, yes, there are people in favor of these trails. So thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Please state your name and sign on, please.
Hi. My name is Kate Elder, and I am a Yorkville resident. I live in the Caledonia subdivision. I, forgive me, I hadn't planned anything formal to say, but I also wanted to voice my personal support and the support of my, the people in my subdivision for the bike paths or the shared pathways, however you want to call it. I urge you, I know last week at the Riverfront meeting, you mentioned that there's a couple of options, and I just urge you to look at the option to dial down the street skate pattern and take some of those funds and gear those funds towards the pathways. I think safe recreation, we can't say it enough, we want our residents to have the ability to exercise, get outdoor activity with their families in and do it in a safe manner. We don't want to see any more residents killed biking on the roads. I just think that's just the priority number one is safe community, is our safe community. So I just urge you to truly look at the wants and the needs and prioritize, and the number one priority is safe recreation for our residents, and please vote yes for the bike paths. Your residents, the people that voted you into office, are truly, truly want it. For every person that voices their opinion and says, no, we don't want it, there's 10 that do, but that those other 10 just don't voice their opinions because they think someone else will do it. So I came kind of flying by the seat of my pants here to be somebody to represent those 10 people and say, we want it. So please listen to your constituents. Thank you.
Your Honor, given the state of politics going on in our nation, it should be no surprise that the issue of the bike paths has reared its ugly head again. This, Your Honor, was the fear of our founding fathers, that our nation would fall from being a republic into the evil clutches of a democracy. Your Honor, members of this council, officers present, it was Alexander Tycher who studied the principles of the rise and falls of a democracy. Tycher then arrived at the following conclusion. A democracy is always temporary in nature. It simply cannot exist as a permanent form of government. A democracy will continue to exist up until the time that voters discover that they can vote themselves generous gifts from the public treasury. From that moment on, the majority always votes for the candidates who promise the most benefits from the public treasury, with the result that every democracy will finally collapse due to fiscal policy, which is always followed by dictatorship. The average age of the world's greatest civilization, beginning from history, has been about 200 years. During those 200 years, these nations have always brought progress in the following sequence: from bondage to spiritual faith, from spiritual faith to great courage, from courage to liberty, from liberty to abundance, from abundance to selfishness, from selfishness to complacency, from complacency to apathy, from apathy to dependence, and from dependence back to bondage. Your Honor, members of this council, I remind you and I ask you, didn't we just not pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic with which it stands? In saying so, I must say that I've seen the enemy, and the enemy lies not within the council, but within the halls of the state Capitol under the auspices of the ruling party over our state attempting to interfere with our affairs. Your Honor, we are the United States of Americans, Americans, and it is the Americans who have always led the way here at home and around the world. It is the Americans that built the Tennessee Valley Authority, which I have seized. It is the Americans who have built Hoover Dam. It is the Americans that time after time have rebuilt communities all over our nation whenever floods, hurricanes, earthquakes, and tornadoes have struck. And I need I remind you that it is the Americans who are today at this very hour who are rebuilding the Freedom Tower where the World Trade Center once stood and from which I once looked over the harbor to see the Statue of Liberty in all her splendor. Thus, Your Honor, the Illinois Department of Transportation has reasoned that Route 47 and the bike trails must be built together in unison, must be nullified altogether to the cost of streets, and are good reasons but poor excuses. The very thought that IDOT, as Americans, cannot separate both is deplorable and shameful. And to that shameful attempt by the Illinois Department of Transportation under the auspices of our governor to strong-arm this council and disable the duties and obligations to its citizens by threatening to place our city at the bottom of a list is a tyrannous Your Honor, members of this council, I ask you to vote to note that last Fri-- that this past Friday, last Friday, I was approached by a young man, I'll skip that. Your Honor, members of this council, I remind you that on Monday, July 4th, 2011, we celebrated Independence Day, and on that day, 200 years ago, our country declared its independence from the King of England by means of Declaration of Independence, to which I respond to the following challenges of Springfield's authority and to the courts. In the following charges leveled against the King of England by the colonists, he has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing the sense to laws to establish judiciary powers. Within this charge, the Illinois Department of Transportation has attempted to ignore our local government in order that it might rule over us for transporting us beyond seas to be tried for pretended offenses. Within this charge, by the same attempt, to remove us from our local body of government into the courts that would favor the governor and the Illinois Department of Transportation, along with those who would profit from our tax dollars. From abolishing the system of English laws in the neighboring province, establishing therein an arbitrary government and enlarging its boundaries so as to render it once an example and fit instrument for introducing the same absolute rule in these colonies. In the same charge, the Illinois Department of Transportation has overreached their authority by attempting to dictate their desires rather than our needs for taking away our charters, abolishing our valuable laws, and alter, ultimately fundamentally, the forms of governance. Your Honor, the Illinois Department of Transportation under government Pat Quinn is making an attempt to alter our government. Oh, Your Honor, why don't I, why don't I, there are many people who are not that angry, and I wish to know, and this council will know, a scene that I witnessed on Friday. Upon the election to President of the United States, First Lady Michelle Obama stated that for the first time in her adult life, she was proud of being American. Your Honor, members of this honorable council, as a young Mexican boy born in the United States, the words wetback, spick, tomato picker, greaser, along with other words, were launched against me with some unpleasant experiences. Nonetheless, I was proud back then, I am proud now, and will always be proud to be an American. And on Friday, June 24th, 2011, I became a witness to a scene of which I have not seen in my 45, four years of following government. That evening, my mayor explained the details of this and other projects. One citizen began to object to the trails being built. My mayor made no attempt to silence or marginalize her, but rather held the microphone for her so that all could hear her dissension, unlike other politicians who ignore their people. Second, as more citizens spoke, both for and against the trails, citizens began to argue with against each other, and it was my mayor who called the attention and yelled out, take your shots at me, not at each other. It was my mayor who chose to take the heat, the dissension, the hits, and the pains, rather than see his own people destroy each other. My fellow citizens, members of the media, and this honorable council, this is leadership, and this is the type of government our founding fathers envisioned, one of hope, one where a government leader chooses to give himself up, rather than to see his own people destroy each other. It would then be who the governments of Pat Quinn, Lisa, Michael Madigan, Dick Durbin, and even of the President of the United States, to stand up and take notice that this is what real government looks like. I then proposed one of the three following options. Reject the state's proposal and let them come back with a counterproposal. I believe that is our right. Table this project until the due date and form an exploratory committee to look forward to any unintended consequences that could potentially harm the city's finances and cast the thus unnecessary burden on our citizens. Your Honor, I caution you and this council to tread carefully. News reports suggest that we could be heading into a double dip recession, and the night businesses who resent the state's laws, along with their taxes, are leaving the state. With all of the movement, it is estimated that by September 2012, Illinois will have more people on welfare than will have people working. I'm still trying to verify that report. Either way, Your Honor, I request that no decision be made this evening in order that we may send the state of Illinois a strong message and let them know whether their wishes ill or well, we tend to remain the master of our own house. Your Honor, I yield the floor back to you and this honorable council.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, Your Honor.
No other citizen comment?
I thought I was going to be brief, and if she starts crying, we'll be able to...
Well, as we don't start crying.
We're issues of test cases.
Please state your name for the record.
Just a few comments about, as we've been talking about, the proposed 47 plan, bike paths and the sidewalks. Just two, some of the things have been touched on, so I'll skip over. But one concern that I've had, I was at the last city council meeting, I didn't make it Friday to the 4:30 event, but I did see the, some of the notes on that in your little video, so I think I'm fairly abreast of what was spoken about at that time. One concern that I have is this comment of some of the wards and maybe all the wards that conducted these surveys or questionnaires to the residents about whether or not they were interested in the bike paths and the sidewalks and the proposal and things. And it seems that the response from those surveys or questionnaires, I'm going to call them surveys for whatever, was that the residents did not want these bike paths and/or sidewalks. And the concern that I have about that is the amount of response that was received to these surveys. My wife and I were trying to rack our brains, you know, did we receive a survey? Did we get an email? Did we get something in our mailbox? Did we get a letter? You know, we can't recall getting the survey. I like to think that both my wife and I are fairly educated and aware of our surroundings, but we can't recall ever getting a survey or a questionnaire or anything inquiring about our interest for this project. And so that makes me think that, well, maybe if I didn't get one, maybe there are some other residents that didn't get this as well, and I'm happy to be corrected on the process of these surveys or whatever. But, so my point is that I'm concerned about the amount of response that was received to these surveys or questionnaires. And if it's fairly minimal, or not all of the wards participated, or not all the residents were surveyed, then how can we use that as a concrete argument against this, these proposed paths and sidewalks? And so I'm here to kind of offer myself and my time, if I can be of service to help pool the community or conduct some sort of survey or questionnaire, I'm happy to do what I can and give my time with a three-month-old, but I'll sign my wife up for something if I can't do it. But I want to make sure that as elected officials, it's, we've elected you to be the voice of the people, and thank you for taking on that obligation. I just want to make sure that the voice is being given to you and not a few residents amongst however many residents live here in the city of Yorkville. So I just want to make sure that the aldermen are convinced and feel good about the response that they got from these surveys. I think there were two of them, I think I've heard that came back in negative. The last thing is that my wife and I both grew up in Naperville, and when we built here, by no means did we think, we're building a home in Naperville. We knew the differences between Yorkville and Naperville. We were very aware of that, and we spent a lot of time thinking about where we were going to build, and we have a baby, and so we spent a lot of time doing that. And we knew that we were not moving to Naperville when we moved from Naperville, but we knew that we were moving to a place that had the potential or the opportunity or the chance, if so chosen, to follow along in a similar developmental path as that. And as unconnected as we may think, people move to a Naperville or a St. Charles or a Batavia or a Geneva for a couple similar reasons. A few that I thought of were schools. You know, Naperville is continuously ranked as having the top schools in whatever radius you want to put on that. And I feel that Yorkville has great schools. My wife is a teacher here in Yorkville. We moved here partially because of that reason, so we feel very comfortable with the school districts here and the potential that our child will have to grow up with an education here in Yorkville. It's safe, right? People move because it's safe. We feel that Yorkville is a safe place to live and to be and to grow. And they move because there's business, there's hotels, there's restaurants, there's shopping, there's Hotel Baker in downtown St. Charles, there's all the things that downtown Naperville has to provide. And, oh yeah, they're all situated right in the middle of a river, right? Very similar to Yorkville. And so I see that there is the potential for a significant amount of development, not next year, but in ten, fifteen, twenty years for the city of Yorkville, and that's why my wife and I moved here. And so tying that back to the paths and the sidewalks is that people are going to move here because they have the availability to get to point A, from point A to point B, easily, safely, conveniently, all the above. And my belief is that if we do not put in these paths, sidewalks, make 47 more accessible, safe, convenient for the residents, that all of those other things that I just spoke about potentially would be in danger of not coming to Yorkville. And that would bring me great sadness, because we moved here because of that potential. And I understand the economy, I understand, I myself was out of work for a while, I know many friends that were as well, so I get that. My concern is that this would have significant impact on the city of Yorkville moving forward, not next year, but in many years to come, if we do not decide to put these paths and sidewalks in. So again, I'll offer my time, I'm happy to give you my contact information afterwards, but I would like to make sure that the entire city, or at least a significant portion thereof, is pooled accurately, efficiently, and correctly on some of these. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Kathy beat you to it, Tom. Kathy was already on the move, but go ahead.
I'm Glenn O. I think they had that question survey with the last two referendums, and they flunked what, if we don't like a certain politician, we vote him out the next time. I believe that's what the decision was. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kathy Hennell. Let me help this gentleman out. There was two referendums that people voted on, so it wasn't a survey, it was actually a vote. Everybody knows that only 26% of the population of Yorkville came out to vote. So, that 26% represented that vote, okay? Now, the thing I want to say is, and there's many people here tonight that want this bike path slash sidewalk, okay? I think, Mayor, you're approaching this the right way. The last thing we need to do is get blackballed from the state and have issues with anything that this city wants to do in the future, and it's happened to many different cities. So I think you're approaching this the right way. The cost of this bike trail is minimal. The maintenance on it, regardless of what everybody has read or commented on it, the history is, there are bike trails out here today. But out there for a year, and the most money that they've spent on those bike trails is putting a coating on it, okay? So, we're talking about $116,000. So Gary, I appreciate the way you're looking at this. We might not want rails with foxes on it, we're going to get plain rails. That's exactly how you reduce expenses and cut the budget. The one thing I will ask everyone who used to do, and it hasn't been a secret, I've been on this for the last three months, prior to the budget being passed, prior to people opting in, we have part-time council members sitting here tonight, six of yous who opted in to health insurance, costing this city over $110,000 a year. Part-time aldermen receiving full-time benefits at taxpayers' cost. The other thing I've asked everybody to look into is the senior garbage. There are 550-something seniors who receive it, there are 250-something seniors who are on circuit breaker. I believe every senior that needs help should have help, but not every senior should be paying 50 cents a month while the rest of us pick up that cost. So again, I'm putting it on record.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to consent agenda. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, oh, as amended, I'm sorry.
Second.
Any comments or questions on consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Muntz.
Aye.
Hunkhouser.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Teeling.
Aye.
Cut.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. On the mayor's report, I will entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Judy Summerlot to the library board.
Second.
No.
Oh.
Second. And George. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Spears.
Aye.
Colosimo.
Aye.
Hunkhouser.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Muntz.
Aye.
Okay, the two employment contracts have been put at the end of the agenda.
Next is appointment of department heads. I know it took me a little while to get to it, but I'm happy to get around to it. But I will entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointments as follows: city administrator Bart Olson, director of finance Rob Pedrickson, director of public works Eric Deuce, chief of police Rich Hart, city engineer EEI, city attorney Kathleen Field Orr, budget officer Bart Olson, and interim director of Parks and Recreation Laura Schra.
Second.
Any comments or questions on staff appointments?
I have one question. Since we're going to be talking about the contract, I mean, we have to approve the contract, right, for EEI tonight?
Yes.
Should we wait for them until we approve the contract? I mean...
I don't know that there's a procedural...
I don't know.
I'll defer to the attorney.
No, you can go ahead and appoint it, and still have difficulty with the contract. Okay. And then, I'm just glad we're finally getting around to do this. I think our staff is good. I mean, it's one of our city codes to do this at the first meeting after the election, and I'm really glad to see that we're getting around to do this, because I think our staff is great. I think they do a good job, and I'm glad they're being appointed.
Well, I got to say, as an alderman, I knew they were good. As mayor, phenomenal. I am working day in and day out, you guys I met, has been incredible. And what they do, day in and day out, is to see it firsthand is, you know, nothing short of amazing. So I'm happy to appoint everybody, myself. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Teeling.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Cut.
Aye.
Muntz.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Colosimo.
Aye.
Hunkhouser.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Cut.
Aye.
Okay, next is consultant services contractor EEI. So I will entertain a motion to approve an agreement for professional consulting city engineering services between Engineering Enterprises, Inc., EEI, and the United City of Yorkville, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. Some move?
Second.
Chris and Rose. Any comments or questions on the EEI contract?
I would just like to say that we have done a lot of business throughout the years with EEI, and Mr. Freeman specifically has always been Johnny on the spot, and I think that this is going to assist our city financially, as well as I'm confident in the work and service that they will provide.
I just have a question about the $1,900 per month for the attendance at the meetings. Is there a set amount of meetings that they attend, or is there...
Yeah, it's in the contract. It's essentially the city council meetings, staff meetings, planning commission, plan council, public works.
Oh, it works?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then, is that 1,900 over and above the 15,000?
It's part of the 15,000, and it's actually a floor. So if they do no other engineering services for us, and they show up to those meetings each month, they get $1,900.
Okay. And then, the 180,000, is that what's left in the 10-month budget that we have, or is that the annual budget?
That's actually an annual budget.
It's an annual budget. So for this year, there's 10 months left?
Correct.
Okay.
So we hope to be 10/12ths of that total.
Right, okay. And then, it seems like I have another question. Oh, I know. When we as aldermen want to, we have an engineering question, is there someone in the city who's going to be, like, fielding those calls, so we don't have to contact the Engineering Enterprises, that they could potentially have the answer from a staff worker? Do we have that set up, or do we automatically email EEI and then potentially get charged for the, whatever they have to do to get us the answer?
Sure. With all consultants, it's my recommendation to route it through either myself or Kristi, just depending on what the topic is, how detailed or complex it is, you know, it may require us to take it to a committee meeting and discuss it first before we embark on incurring ours, or maybe something as simple that, you know, Kristi or I might be able to answer it. Probably more so Kristi than me.
Okay. And is that, I mean, a lot of the municipalities that have firm, and I don't have a problem with EEI, I think they do a great job, they've done a lot of work for us, I really don't. I'm just, you know, curious as to how this is all going to work out, is, you know, you say Kristi in yourself, and some of the questions are, like, engineering questions. It seems like we should have someone that has a, you know, an engineering background, if we have someone in the city that has an engineering background, and then if they, you know, I don't know, you know, I just, because I asked Joe a lot of questions. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, I sent him a lot of emails and had a lot of questions, and, you know, and he was always very good about getting the answers for me and, you know, gave me the information I needed to know. So I just thought maybe if there was, you know, if that, if you think Kristi, you know, if she has engineering background, that's great, is it going to interfere with her job? Because she's got a lot of responsibilities, you know, and she's the only person there for her job. So I don't, you know, it just, I just wish we had someone in the city that could, you know, we had, that had that background, that we could ask instead of potentially, you know, costing the city more money. And, you know, I talk to a lot of people, and, you know, people who work for engineering firms, and they think this is a pretty good contract, you know, but I'm just wondering how, from our end, you know, can we not, you know, can we do that? Can we set something like that up? The person who I talked to, he said a lot of the municipalities have someone overseeing, you know, the, they have, and I know in the contract it says you're going to be paying attention to how much is actually being spent, you know, spent a month, and, but they have someone overseeing that there's jobs that, you know, potentially some of our city staff could be doing that could alleviate a lot of the $15,000, you know, cap.
That's within Kristi and my responsibility to manage staff and manage resources, and to the extent that we can answer a question, of course, we're not going to farm it out to EEI.
Okay.
Unless if there's some, you know, time, major time efficiency or cost efficiency in doing so.
Okay.
And then, you know, if not, you know, anybody has the right to ask an engineering question in the city, be it an alderman or a resident.
Right.
And so that's just something we have to figure out on a day-to-day basis, you know, how to best utilize our time.
Okay. And then, I just have, I'm sorry, I have one more question, I just, if we, with the Route 47 lighting, you think, you know, because I understand from the contract that if we don't spend $15,000 in one month, we can use that at a different month. So say, when, you know, when this Route 47 project comes in, and there's extra engineering work, and we have these hours banked, is that what we're doing, we're banking the hours? I mean, we're banking the money that we owe?
Sure, it's a hard yearly cap with a goal for a quarter, and then it's got a monthly target, obviously, for a budget.
Okay.
So Jeff knows, their firm knows what our budgeted amount is, and Kristi and I obviously have an interest in making sure that, you know, they come in under that, and that to the extent that they have money left over, that they're not just doing work just to, you know, gain hours. It's got to be meaningful and helpful to the residents.
Okay. And we feel confident that this $15,000 is going to be enough?
Yeah, and if it isn't, there's a seven-day-out clause, and, you know, there's other options available.
Okay. All right, that's all my questions.
I would like to strongly suggest that we handle the engineering portion the same we handle our attorney portion. Not everybody, and that was a procedure that we established a long time ago.
That's what I was getting at.
That we don't all contact the attorney or our engineering firm. And then, we also had a policy, as far as contacting staff, we do contact, we could contact department heads if we had questions, whatever, but we don't contact everybody on staff or whatever, and we expect the department head to come back with a response, or our city administrator. And these are policies that we did establish quite a while ago, and it seemed to be running very smoothly. Because I know at one time, everybody was calling Kathy, you know, and she was good enough not to charge us, but it could have been very expensive. And that's why these policies were established, and I think they're working well.
Yes, even in my role, I thought of the policy, because I go to Bart first with any questions. Now, we don't have to involve Kathy or engineering, you know, that's what I do.
That's what I was getting at. And when I said staff, I didn't mean some random person in staff. Some department had that, has a handle of engineering, who has a, you know, some sort of background or has a handle, that's what I was, what I meant.
That looks pretty sharp.
That's what I was thinking.
He does, he talks to me every day.
Yeah, that's who I was thinking.
Anyone else on the EEI contract?
Well, simply for Diane's concerns, I think we, you know, I give this advice to my clients all the time, if you're paying me to be in court, if you have a question, ask me while you're in court with me. You get two for one. Instead of going to court, charging for that, going back to my office, and three hours later, you give me a call, and now you're going to get charged for the phone call. We can, you know, it's the same, it's the same mentality here. EEI is going to be at all our meetings that involve engineering, they're going to be at public works, they're going to be at planning commission, they're going to be at city council. If we have questions, they're obviously at our disposal, if not, we can work through staff. So I feel, I feel very comfortable with it.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Gilson.
Aye.
Cut.
Muntz.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
to see if there's a great disparity, at least then we may have a, a question as to why that is. So I would just ask, unless Bart, and I don't know if this is a time-sensitive issue, I gotta look around the motorcycle to you. But if it's not a time-sensitive issue, just so we know exactly what we're voting on, I would like to table it to the next city council meeting to have a side-by-side comparison.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a time sensitivity. I believe that in general, both budgets contain cuts from what was originally approved. So, you know, there's no issue there with us, you know, needing to authorize an additional expense or anything.
Okay, so, yeah, I agree with Carlo. I had at least eight questions to ask and they're detailed questions and I think that would be best ironed out on a committee level.
So I guess I would, I would make a motion, return this matter, well, this is from the mayor's report, so it's not a committee. So we send it to admin or... So I would make a motion to return this to admin committee and set it on their agenda at the next administration meeting.
Second. Roll call.
Todd?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosseum?
Aye.
Tom Hager?
Aye.
Lushisky?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Okay, next item is our first look at fiscal year thirteen budget. And this has been informational, just to let you know that we are starting to work on a new budget already. So we're hoping to have a new budget much, much earlier than we had in the past. So we have plenty of time for discussion, hating things out, looking at all aspects of the budget. So I guess it is informational, and comments or questions on next year's budget?
Well, I just had a question. When we were talking about revenues, there's statements out here that said that the, certain fees were higher than we projected, but lower than we budgeted, which tells me that we actually projected, budgeted for things to a number that we knew we wouldn't achieve. Is that, is that correct?
Yes and no. What that means is we actually approved the budget numbers in, it would have been April twenty-ten or April twenty-eleven, depending on which budget we're talking about. And for the twenty-ten, eleven numbers, you know, we went through and we projected them in March. You know, we were doing the next year's budget. So all that means is, you know, a year and a half ago, we thought we were gonna be here and then we took a look at it back in March and we said, well, maybe not, we're probably gonna be somewhere down here. And then the truth was somewhere in the middle, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on next year's budget? Or the process? Probably the same thing goes with next year's budget. We're gonna prepare something, then to admin and, and beyond the course of several months that we look at it. So we're gonna have plenty of time to discuss next year's budget.
Can I ask, this is not about the, the twenty-thirteen budget, but it's just kind of a question about the budget, like from this year? Can I ask that?
Sure.
Okay. I got an email today about the IML conference and I know it was just sent, I believe, from the IML. What is in the budget for the IML conference at this point?
Nothing at this point, so there is...
I couldn't remember how we left it, I mean, how it was budgeted for, okay.
Yeah, there are money for other conferences, for staff, but that was the direction at one of the last meetings to remove the IML conference.
I couldn't remember if we left it in there for new aldermen. I, I just needed to know. I just couldn't remember. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is Route forty-seven expansion. And again, no official action on this tonight, just more direction. We started the conversation Friday evening. I think mostly everybody was there. I'm not gonna rehash everything, but we do have options in front of us. And it's pretty much in the memo here where the options are facing us. So just kinda wanna open up the floor, see what direction the council is looking to go on this.
I have several questions, Your Honor. Two things. Number one, do we have any sort of an update on the privately raised funding that is supposed to be coming forward to the council for our portion of those, of those paths? And I know, Dan, you're working, I believe, working with that group, but do you have any update on where we're at on that?
Well, a month ago, you told us not to do it, so you didn't want our money.
Well, I thought you went forward, having a fundraiser anyway.
No, we decided against it. We were going to and then we thought, we cannot collect money from people if the city council has already said, we don't want your money. So we decided not to, but we, since Friday, have talked about regrouping and, you know, starting to do that because we would like to do it still.
So when are those monies due to be collected?
They're, they get billed for, as they do the work, right?
So when will we have to have that funding in place?
Well, of course, all the stage of construction is done, made fund, funded and billed us. So I mean, they, you know, bids this year, they probably won't start construction until next spring, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, they actually just bill us whenever they get billed. So the way it's gonna work is, you know, if the total project that we're responsible for is three point six million dollars and the total project is thirty-six million, they're going to send us ten percent of every bill. So regardless of whether it's for trails or stoplights or, you know, roadway. And so, you know, that is gonna kind of, you know, start, I think, next fiscal year, we had some money budgeted. And then it'll ramp up the two after that and then tail off that last year. So, because there'll be construction inspections and invoices that aren't paid. So we do expect it to be spread out over four fiscal years. So as far as that hundred and sixteen thousand dollar number, I mean, theoretically, it would be spread out over four fiscal years in different, in different amounts.
I just wanted to say one thing more about the, the reason that we had so many events scheduled and we were trying to get a good jump on this is because we wanted to have the money by the time that they were doing the bids. So, you know, we didn't have a lot of time. You know, now, if we go ahead with this, we have a little more time. We were trying to get the money so you, the city council would know, we are serious, we have the money for you. So that's why we were really working hard on it at that point. And they wanted to tell us not to, that you didn't want the money. We just, we didn't do it because it would have been, you know, it would have been poor judgment, I think, to take people's money if the city council had said no. But we were trying to do it quickly and we had a lot of events scheduled because we wanted to show you, you know, we wanted to show that we were very serious about this, that we weren't just, you know, messing around. We were very serious. That's all.
If you don't mind, I have a few more before. Okay, and so at this point, there's, there's zero funding though. I just wanted to find out what, what's out there. Second thing is, I wanted to read a memo and I guess, I'll, I'll read the memo and direct it at staff because I'm, I'm not quite sure if I understand what's changed since this memo. This memo is dated back on April nineteenth, twenty-eleven. It was new business number three on the Public Works Committee meeting. And on it, it's, the title is Route forty-seven resolution regarding shared use path, Route twenty, one twenty-six to Salmonok. Okay, so I know it's this section, but still a little confused as to how things have changed. In this memo, it's a memo, it's a memorandum from Joe Irot to Bart Olson, and we received a copy. It says, attached, find a proposed resolution regarding a shared use path along forty-seven between Route one twenty-six and Salmonok. The resolution states that the city does not want Idot to construct a shared use path along this section of highway to avoid, to avoid adversely affecting adjacent properties and buildings. Instead, sidewalk would be constructed on both sides of the highway in this section. Idot has requested that the city adopt this resolution so that they can document that they have followed properly, that they have properly followed their complete street requirements. The complete streets policy requires Idot to design their projects to accommodate all users, to include not only motor vehicles, but also bicyclists and pedestrians. So it requires Idot to design their projects that way. The policy also increased Idot's standard funding percentage to eighty percent for shared use paths from fifty percent with the city paving, with the city paying the balance. Says if we do not pass the resolution, Idot will need to put the Route forty-seven project on hold while they evaluate the cost of acquiring additional right-of-way and constructing a shared use path between Route one twenty-six and Salmonok in the downtown area. It is likely that all buildings on one side of the highway would need to be removed. Additional public hearings would be required for the new design, which would result in a time delay. And the city would still be responsible for twenty percent of the additional right-of-way acquisition. And I have this highlighted from, from April. It says, if we go through that process and then decline to fund our twenty percent share, Idot would probably declare the additional right-of-way acquisition as cost prohibitive and go back to the design we currently have. Therefore, I recommend that we avoid that entire process and the time delay and adopt the resolution as requested. Please note that this resolution does not obligate the city to fund any part of the Idot Route forty-seven project and only states that the city does not want a shared use path constructed between Route one twenty-six and Salmonok Street and therefore will not contribute to funding of that path. City funding obligations for various improvements such as utilities, lighting, shared use paths, sidewalk, et cetera, will be covered by a separate city-state agreement that Idot will send us for approval later this year. Can you place this IML on the April nineteenth Public Works Committee agenda for consideration? And then after that, there's the resolution. I'm sure you're familiar with that resolution complete. But I can read it and basically, according to what I see there, I'm a little, I, I don't, I guess, if you could explain to me what's changed since all that has happened? Because now we're saying, if we go forward and we don't do this, we're now only gonna have to pay an additional thirty percent for engineering changes, but the, the project will be on hold. And this, this memorandum and the resolution states the opposite.
Sure, you've got two separate issues here. You've got, the Route forty-seven project goes from Kennedy Road to seventy-one, okay? That is doughnut in the middle of the entire section, basically in the downtown, that we had never planned to put sidewalks or trails in. And so, you know, we had told Idot, it doesn't make sense for anybody to put them there because of the urban cross-section through the downtown. And so they had never planned to put them there. So they came to us when we were going through our trail issues and said, okay, we wanna memorialize that decision. That way, you know, there's no going back on it in the future and it just makes it clear. And so they said, here's this memorandum of understanding and that's what we signed. So in that specific section between Salmonok and one twenty-six, the bike trails, if they're built, will actually dive off of Route forty-seven and go down probably South Main Street or State Street on the west side of forty-seven. And on the east side, I don't know if it does a name, a bike ra, a bike path at all. So that particular resolution was just to deal with that one section, the fact that we didn't want them there and never had. So, and that's Joe's comment in there was, this has nothing to do with the overall Route forty-seven project because there's still the two sections from essentially seventy-one to one twenty-six and then from Salmonok Street north to Kennedy Road that is the one that's being discussed. Because there is proposal there for new sidewalks and new trails where there currently aren't ones.
And I, I think this one, this particular resolution went to council, was tabled?
Uh, no, it was approved.
It was approved?
Yes.
Okay. Being that it was approved and we stayed that, are we gonna get hit later for any sort of changes from Idot for doing this?
No, you know, that was what I think that was done and it probably won't be reconsidered just because there's no legit logical reason why you would put bike paths in the downtown because it would, it would ruin the cross-section of the downtown. And then two, it would actually cost us money to put them in on top of the construction. So they would have to engineer the bike paths, delay the project, they'd make us pay money and then we'd have to pay money to actually construct them. So there's no, there's no logical argument from a planning standpoint or from a, you know, a, a city standpoint why we would add those in.
Okay, and then just in general, I guess, when, when all this happened, and I know I'm beating a dead horse here, but this goes back to getting information from staff and making sure the point man has all the information we need before we make decisions and put out referendums and things like that. Why, why has this come up like this all of a sudden? Why has this happened last minute? Why wasn't this told to us earlier?
The opt-out payment?
Mm-hmm.
We didn't know anything about it. You know, it's one of those things that until it hits the newspaper and somebody from Idot reads it and says, well, you can't do that, you know, it's, it's one of those things that I don't think they have a formal policy for. They're probably in new territory, probably have to run it by their staff, so it was news to us, so.
But they don't have anything in writing, Bart, that, anything, any, any policies in place or anything in writing that says we, that this is something we have to abide by and we're gonna get hit with thirty percent?
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, this is something they made up on the fly, I guess? After hearing that we were gonna opt out of these payments and they're not used to that? This is something they've imposed upon us to, to make us do things their way? And I, I agree with the gentleman I hear, Jesse, he's exactly that. They're, they're forcing their hand upon us by making up the rules as they go and, and imposing a thirty percent cost to that.
Yeah, and their argument was that it was fair, you know? We were proceeding in one direction under good faith, you know, under a previous administration. And to delay it, you know, they didn't think it was fair to the taxpayers of the entire state, you know, to pay for the change in direction. So they said, you know, we would seek, you know, reimbursement from the city for those change in plans. And then, oh, by the way, the worst part about it is, is, you know, the plans are delayed six to nine months, so.
You know, and that's the funny part. It's not fair for that, but it's, it's also okay for them to be five months behind on payments to cities and not pay the schools and to cut all these essential programs. And yet they wanna come back to the city and, and whack us with a thirty percent change. Do we really feel that they're gonna hold up this project? I mean, is that conjecture at this point or is that something that we have in writing?
In my opinion, it is not conjecture and we do not have it in writing.
Okay, I, I'm just more comfortable with getting some, some more information here. I certainly do not wanna see Idot hold up this project. But then again, on the other hand, I think this is ludicrous. I think what the state's doing here is making up a rule as they go to make the city do things their way. And, and, you know, we talk about the ITAP plan and about putting those things in the plan, the trails and that. You know, back in two thousand and eight, when times were better, those, that was a great plan. I mean, those were wonderful things. It's, it's, once again, it's back to those, times have changed. The economy's different and, you know, don't ask us for an opinion in two thousand and eight and three years later, if things are bad, hold us, hold our feet to the fire over that when you can't afford it. And that's, that's kinda where I'm at with, with my reasoning allowed it to being upset with, with the situation we've been, that's been brought up us here. And, and I understand really what you're doing. I think it's a great idea. We need to cut out some of those things that are in the railing and the fancies and that for that project. And if we can make up funding for that, that's great, but we still have other things too. We don't have the, the private portion of that funding. We still don't have maintenance paid for. And then on top of that, one other thing I'm looking at is, so if we go forward with this and we can't go forward with the future projects, if we go forward with this, are we gonna expect it to go, to go forward with all the future, you know, bike, you know, paths and trails and things when we may not have the money for that? Are we gonna have a trail that leads to nowhere and that we can't build because we don't have funding for? And these are all uncertainties that I'm uncomfortable with in, in general. So I just wanted to state my opinion and lay that out on the table.
And to, just to give everybody kind of a timeline of what we're gonna be going through as form, as formal decision. If we change absolutely nothing with bike trails and they're currently in, then there's no delay to the project. So they are still sending us a draft agreement, which we're going to have to review and approve or decline, that's gonna lay out everything that we are participating in as part of the project. And so I do expect that to come in front of you at the next city council meeting. It will have to be acted upon without delay by August first. So that'll give us two meetings to discuss it. Nothing new has come up with it yet. It's all stuff that we've known about, preemption, sidewalks, trails, sewer water, you know, those type of things, downtown aesthetics. And so, you know, that's the timeline as far as making a formal commitment that yes, it's definitely in, is what we're looking at, two meetings from now.
Can we get some of that in writing though? I mean, is there anyone who can give us, if they're gonna force that hand upon us, is there anyone that's gonna put that fire and that onus on them in writing that says, we're gonna require Yorkville to go, we're gonna hold up Idot. Idot's gonna hold up this whole project and we're gonna require Yorkville to pay thirty percent if, if we change these plans? And, and I, I just would feel a lot more comfortable having, if they're gonna do that and they're, and they're comfortable holding up a state project for having Yorkville pay back that, those funds, I'd rather see that in writing. I, I feel a lot more comfortable with it, I'll tell you that.
The, the question prior was, do they, do we have anything in writing that says if you do this, they're gonna do that? And the answer is no, not in like a, a legal, you know, letter form or anything. But in the packet, there is a letter, I forget the gentleman's name from Idot. It's included and it basically just says, you know, that thirty thousand dollars equals five percent of the, the engineering costs for the trails and that's what that thirty thousand dollars is based upon. And it does give the six to nine month time delay. So we do have that in writing. I mean, they're not just pulling that out, you know, and saying, you know, this is my guess. It's, you know, it's probably been vetted by Idot and their staff members as far as time and money. But, you know, that was one of my questions in the meeting was, do you have a state statute? Do you have an internal administration policy?
Right.
You know, that says this? And their answer was no, but don't, you know, it's fair. And I said, well, depends. So, you know, that is what that they would, you know, I'm assuming, run through their staff, run through their legislators and make them the decision about our future projects.
Thank you. The problem that we have for us is that this, this project, this widening of forty-seven, to me, is the key that we, we need to focus on as a council. To me, the widening of forty-seven is important, it's necessary and we need to bring it in. So to me, now that becomes my number one priority. I think that the solution to this problem is before us. I think it's simple and I think it's clear. I think we all just have to wrap our brains around it and just do it. The voters elected us to take action and that's what we have to do at this point. The fact that this project started in nineteen ninety-six and we are now sitting here in two thousand and eleven, we are holding the proverbial hot potato, okay? And whether we like it... And whether we like it or not, it's in our lap, so we have to do something with it. And just holding on to it and burning our hands, it's not, it's not the answer. The way I see it is, is this way, and you can disagree with who, agree with who or not. The number one priority is the widening of Route 47, and that has to be done. If these bike trails, or removing the bike trails, or this two-point, this two-mile portion of the bike trails, is going to threaten the widening of Route 47, we have to look at our priorities. And in reality, we can get this done without violating the trust of the residents through the vote on the referendum, by the mayor, by the mayor's suggestion as to cutting the cost. The referendum was not, do you want bike trails? That wasn't the referendum. The referendum was, do you want to issue $1 million of bonds to build bike trails? Those are two completely different questions in my eyes. So, I believe that we can include the bike trails on Route 47. We are not issuing $1 million, we are not issuing one penny of bonds to include these bike trails. Therefore, we are honoring the request of the voters through those two referendums. We are going to cut $150,000 to $200,000 out of the project through other things that don't involve a great deal of engineering, put in Route 47, get it widened, put in these trails, and be done with it. And that's what I am going to support. Looking at the proposals and cuts that we can make, my recommendations would be that we remove the fencing and the handrails, the fencing being a total of $172,000. I know that the little foxes and the galvanized black fences look nice, but at this point, we can't afford it. The handrails are $40,500, and that's a total of $212,000, $212,500, I'm sorry, $212,500, which is significantly more than the $116,000. And just to be safe, I'm also going to recommend that we remove the stamping from the crosswalks, which is status an additional $59,000. So, at this point, by making those three adjustments, we're looking at approximately $270,000 in savings from the project, which would then include $116,000 for the bike trail, without going against the residents' vote on the referendums. We have to take action, we have to do something, this is a time-sensitive situation. Do I think the state of Illinois is petty enough to pull the funding of this project and not widen our road? Yes, I do. And I put the widening of 47 as the number one priority. So, that's where I stand, that is my position. I hope that the residents of Ward 1 call me if they agree or disagree with me, but we have to take action, and that's what I support doing. I think, I think, well, thank you. I, I think, I, I just think the reality is, if from 1996 to 2011, it took us to widen this project, even though I don't appreciate what the state of Illinois is doing, I don't appreciate them twisting our arms, I don't appreciate any of this, I think that by following this real course of action initiated by Mayor Golinski, we're able to get these bike trails, get the roads, and we make both sides happy. We make the pro-bike trail supporters happy, because they get bike trails, we get the anti-bond issuance individuals, and that's exactly what they voted against, happy because we're sticking to the referendum. So, I, that's what we have to do.
Glad you haven't heard from me yet. I had better weigh in on this one. I agree, you know, widening of 47 is the overriding issue here. I'll go back 15, 20 years, we've been fighting to get this done, and likely or not, the state controls the hand on this. And I like the idea of finding other areas to cut corners here, save a little money, you know, the fence, lights, whatever, these are things we can always upgrade at a later date, the economy is a little bit better, we have an opportunity here right now to keep this project moving, and I think it's something we need to do. As far as private funds, I don't know at this point if that's really realistic. The one thing I think we're missing a bone on is going after some corporate funding. I know there's companies out there, I've talked a little about this a little bit, that would probably donate some money towards this project, maybe in return for some tasteful plaque or something, saying they contributed. I think it's something that we need to look into further, but in the meantime, I'd like to see this moving, and with the mayor's plan, and see if we can work this out.
I guess my question to Carlo and Larry, and just for sake of open debate...
Sure.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you feel more comfortable, though, knowing that if IDOT is forcing that hand, and this is the situation that's upon us, and I agree 100% that widening of Route 47 is, is number one priority, I agree with that? Wouldn't you feel a lot more comfortable asking them to put, that the fact that they will hold up this project if we don't pay back this funding, and that onus upon them, so that, we're not using conjecture at this point as a rule of thumb, and we're not, and I don't see that being a big process. I really don't, I see us being able to call all that and say, you know what, here's the, here's what you've laid upon us? We would like that in writing, because I, I, I've got people to, to, I've got residents that are dead set against this, and I've got residents that are for it. But I certainly, if we're going to have to vote on this, then I'd certainly feel more comfortable if that's the hand they're going to force. Wouldn't you feel more comfortable putting, having that put in writing for us?
And if I can respond, George, I would absolutely feel more comfortable putting that in writing, but good luck. The state of Illinois is not going to put in writing that they're going to pull this project if we don't put in these bike trails.
That's what they threatened, so why would, I don't...
Well, they threatened, but they're not going to put it in writing. I, I, to me, it's a time-sensitive issue. We are in, this council, this mayor, this administration, we are in a detail line of this project. We have not been involved since 1996, we do not have the luxury of time at this point. You know how the state of Illinois is, as well as I do, with their budgeting. The state of Illinois is absolutely broke. There's a small window to which they've actually, through the hard work of our state representatives, our state senators that represent this area, they've actually gotten that money allocated for our Route 47. The moment we snowball nose at it, next fiscal year, I can guarantee that that money will not be allocated to Route 47 in this area. It will go somewhere else, somebody else will have a new wider road, and we need to have Route 47 widened. That is my number one priority. I voted against the referendum, I did not want to issue the bonds, and lo and behold, this will. I get my way, too, because I'm not issuing a bond, and I would not vote to issue a million-dollar bond. So, there's .2 seconds left on the clock, and we've got to take the shot at this point. The, the game is over. Like I already said, the state of Illinois unfortunately does control the purse strings. There's nothing we can do about it.
What are we, really, at that point, Bart? Are we at the point where we're, where it's .2 seconds left, and we have to shoot that three-pointer? Or are we at the point where we can go back to IDOT and ask for that, and at least ask for them to say, hey, if this is the hand you're going to lay upon us, we'd like that in writing? Is, are we at, are we at the, are we at the die-hard, have to make a decision right now point?
The decision must be, the decision to back bike trails out of the project can be made at any time. You are looking, the minute you make that decision, six to nine month delay in the project at minimum. The agreement is on our desks, and will be in front of you the next two city council meetings, and has to be approved by the end of the month.
Why am I raising my hand? That's my guy.
Yes, and enjoy.
But, now, we did have a memo where they talked about $30,000 and six to nine month delay, correct? I mean, it's basically in writing. And that memo isn't in our packet, and I know I had seen...
It isn't?
I saw it.
No, it is not in the packet, but I know I printed a memo, and I think the memo was in Friday's packet.
Yeah, it was part of an outline that they gave us for a meeting, so that, that's what I meant by, they've put it in writing.
Right.
It just doesn't say like, you know, by the powers vested in me by the state of Illinois, if you do this, we're going to do this.
Pretty clear, there.
Gary, I think one of the reasons we're not going to be able to obtain a memo from IDOT that says, well, if, if, if we don't build them next year, you're not going to get funding next year, is because that's not their decision. IDOT is, is under the control of the state legislature. When the budget comes up next year, that's for the members of the House and the Senate to decide where those funds are going to be allocated. So, if you ask IDOT, well, you're going to have the funding for us next year, they're going to say, call your representatives, call your state senator, they work just like the municipality. At the end of the day, it's going to be back in the hands of the legislature, legislature, and based on the control of that legislature, and the demographic of Kendall County, my guess is that the funds are going somewhere else. So, I don't want to take that risk.
Sure. Clearly, they're not worried about that getting out in the press, you know, so they're not bluffing about that point, because they told us in a staff meeting, knew, knowing that we were going to distribute their memo and then talk about it. So, you know, at this point, you know, asking for it is something I can do, I don't know whether they'll say yes or no, I don't know what good it will do, other than to give us, you know, kind of a smoking gun, but in my opinion, it'll probably, you know, not make members of their staff too happy, after they jump through extra hurdles for us.
We already, we already have proof that they will do it. I mean, they did it in 96, they took the money that was allocated to 47, and went other places. You know, it went to Oswego, or wherever it went. Marty?
Oh, yes, I think we all agree, Route 47 needs to be widened, and then going, going back to 95 and 96, whoever was in the council, whoever they did, ended up saying no to Route 47, and here we are 15 years later, just kept trying to do it now. If we say no this time, 20, 30, people would be wanting what we did. So, and I think after the mayor talked Friday night, that the state might not have the money to budget next year, so if we don't do it this year, again, it will all probably be moved on before Route 47 ever gets widened, and it's, it's horrible, it needs to be widened. I like the ideas suggested, we take out all the frills, or the railings and things, save the money there. Like Carlos said, you get, you get some trails on 47, it's not through the whole city, and it doesn't cost us any extra money as far as the referendum, so I'm sitting on it for it.
I would just like to add, with taking everything out that Carlo recommended, and you suggested curiously, that is going to pay for our portion of the entire project, each section, or is it just for what's in front of us right now, number one? And number two, I'd like to know if we are also going to have to pay 8% with each one of these changes. IDOT is going to be charging us for that as well, I believe that Mr. Freeman had mentioned that Friday night. Is that correct?
There's a five-item checklist that Laura Shaw had included in your memo, that kind of gives an idea of what they would actually charge us, so. The railing is not one of them that they said would be for sure, an easy pullout, but it is one that they said would be significantly easier than, than bike trails, so...
So, we will have to pay additional funds, correct?
Yes. From what I understood, though, is that you're looking, depending on how much of the rails, looks like the IDOT said, variable based on the extent of all the changes requested. And they did say that the minimum delay would be three to four months there. That's one of them that, the reason for the delay is that they actually have a sub-consultant that does the engineering for the rail, and their sub-consultant is actually maxed out on hours. So, the sub-consultant, to get a new change order approved for the engineering contract, would actually have to go through the state approval process for a change order. And so, that is the entire extension, three to four months that I'm aware of, because total amount of the rails isn't a big deal, it's the additional contract with the sub-consultant. So, in talking with the members from IDOT, I had actually proposed, you know, if it's the result of a, you know, a 10-hour change, or a 16-hour change, it might actually be easier for you to just send the sub-consultant contract over to us, since that's what you're going to be charging us anyway, let us pay for it, run through our process, and then, you know, essentially, we're doing the work on IDOT's behalf, but with their consultants. So, theoretically, that should be cheaper and take a lot less time, hopefully, meeting the deadline.
Well, I'd like to know what the actual cost would be. It may be cheaper for us to go ahead with the foxes, and then just to have a party down there and knock them all out, you know? And there's so many unknowns here.
Sure. They said between 10 and 16 hours, so you've got to figure consultant's contract is going to be anywhere from 100 bucks to 300 bucks an hour, depending on who's doing it. So, my guess is, you know, a design engineer is probably going to be 150 to 200 bucks an hour, so we're looking at $20,000?
For the changes?
Or...
$2,000.
$2,000.
$2,000 charged for changing item by item, or $2,000 charge? Because right now, we're talking about possible lights, possible, you know, railing, possible stamping in the concrete, all this sort of thing.
Just for the fence.
So, what are we talking, in total, if we were to knock all these different items that we're trying to make up this money for, what are we talking that dollar equals for what IDOT's going to charge us back to do that?
Well, it depends on the item. The fence is the only one that I had an in-depth conversation, because I consider it to be kind of low-hanging fruit, based on the cost. The light poles are probably similar to the fence, as far as amount of hours. Again, I think you're in the same conversation with the sub-consultant contracts. The bike trails are intensive, obviously, and then the coloring is not an issue as far as taking it out, but I believe the stamping is.
I, I guess I'll say it, I still am not comfortable, I don't think we have a figure, a dollar figure as to what IDOT will charge us to take, to make up these funds, Gary, that we're looking at making up. There's, there's going to be a cost associated with it, we don't know that cost yet. And shouldn't we find that out first, before we make any decisions?
Can I say something? We, we had, when we were trying to get the information from IDOT, they said that once we determine what we're looking to take out, they can give us a better estimate. So, if we say we want to change the fence, and they will give us a better estimate of what it was, but they also had to talk to their consulting engineer to get an estimate for us. So, as soon as, you know, it sounds like some of the direction may be the fence and the stamping, if we go back to them with that, and we have direction from you to go back to them with that, then they can give us a better number.
But if we put the same fence in, without the, without the foxes, why would it be any change?
It's still as expensive, because it's the type of fence. It's a black, a black coating on there, that's a 25-year warranty, you know, it protected against salt, and you know how much salt the state uses, versus their standard rail, which is a galvanized steel, which is like what you see on the bridge. And that's the change, they actually have to change the type of fence, instead of using what's in the drawing right now, and that's the upgrade.
Yeah, it would be a, to remove anything from a project is going to be a percentage of the cost of that item. So, the cost of the item is listed in the memo, but for some of them, the cost to remove isn't, because it's variable. But, you know, for the, for the rail, I ventured the cost of $2,000, you know, that's .1% of $200,000. Or it's 1% of $2,000, $200,000. But for, you know, the trails, it was going to be 30%. So, you, you're not going to get to a point where they're going to say, well, yes, you're going to save $10,000 on removing the colored stamping, or the coloring or the stamping, but it's going to cost us more to engineer it out. It's going to be a percentage of that.
I, I understand the money issues, I think it's a good idea, too. I think it's a good idea, taking some of these things out. I understand that there's a cost associated with doing that. My concern is this memo from, let's see, it is actually from Laura, no, it might be from Bart, that says, the time delays are negligible to several months. That's like a very wide range of time, and if it's several months, is it going to delay the project too much? I mean, that's what makes me nervous about all these changes.
Yes, some of them will, some of them will not. So, they're supposed to bid in November.
Yes.
They're supposed to start construction at some point in 2012.
Right.
So, you know...
So, if they, if we missed the, when they want it to be bid in November, we're, I mean, that's not really...
Everything has to be finalized by basically the end of September in their, you know, administrative...
Right, but what if we give them direction, we want to take this, this, and that out, and then all of a sudden, they come back and say, we are not going to have this done by the time it's time to go to bed?
That's a risk, I guess, that, you know, is unknown at this point.
Frankie?
Back to the fences. These fences aren't purchased yet, correct?
Correct.
I guess in my simple mind, I don't understand why this is costing so much money, I really, I guess I'm with George, I think this is kind of like highway robbery with the state. So, we're going to have a parapet wall, and we're going to put fences on, so we're taking away the fancy ones, nothing's purchased yet, and we're putting something else in, and I, I don't know, I just...
Yeah, it has to do with the anchor points, and the individual fence posts, it's...
Well, and it goes back to the whole, if we don't put the trails in the re-engineering of $30,000. I brought this up before, why do you have to engineer it? Why, I know you're telling me to gravel and every, you know, stuff, but I don't know, it just seems, if this was a contractor saying, I was remodeling my kitchen, and they pulled they pulled this, I'd fire them. I'm sorry. You know, I'm being simplified with, you know, the fences aren't purchased, the lights aren't purchased. It just seems kind of ridiculous.
Yeah, the issue is with the approval process to get additional engineering contracts involved, to change the plans, you know, it's not just one engineer at one level that says, okay.
I understand that. The fence, though, seems so much simpler than I can understand with the bike path.
It is, which is why I was hopeful that if we paid for our sub-consultant's contract, that we might be able to do it within the time, or wouldn't delay the project at all. You know, it could be a matter of three weeks, and it could run concurrently with what they're doing, but.
And I bet you if we go to their office, they sit in front of a computer, and they're going to make a couple clicks, and it's going to be done, and, you know, I don't know. It just seems like.
No, knowing the state's bureaucracy, I trust them when they say it's going to be that point in time to make the changes.
I just.
I think, like I said, we need to take some action. So what I would like to propose, if the council's amicable to it, is that we instruct staff to go back to IDOT and state that we're willing to keep the bike trails in. However, we would like estimates on our liability and our costs and our delay if we remove the handrails, remove the fence, and possibly remove the stamping. That's well above the hundred and sixteen thousand dollar cap that we were hoping to recuperate through the appropriation of the bond. Then we can have a clear answer for you, George, and everybody else, and we can feel more comfortable when they come back and say, if you want that, it's going to be two months, twelve thousand dollars. So now we actually have something to chew on.
I think that's great.
So I would ask, if everybody else is amicable, that we instruct the staff to do just that, come back with an answer, because I do believe titles have the essence. I do believe that point two seconds around the clock, and by the end of August, we've got to take the shot. And the end of August is here before you know it. It's already July, April, July this weekend. So I do not want it to delay this any further, but that's what I would ask for this council to do.
I concur, sir.
I do, too, Gary. I think that's, if we cross our, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is and get all the answers we need, including cost estimates as to certain engineering law move, it's going to make everybody feel a lot better about this. And I admit, with everybody here, I don't delay IDOT and Forty-seven widening either, so just for the record.
And that would include the suggestion Bart had about us using their sub, their sub, what was it?
Subconsultants.
Subconsultant, because if this cost us twenty-five hundred dollars, imagine what the residents of this city would do to us if Forty-seven's widening is lost because we did not pay twenty-five hundred dollars to a sub-consultant. Imagine what I would do to us if the widening of Route Forty-seven was lost because we didn't pay twenty-five hundred dollars. So I would like to explore that option as well. And I think with those options, we're going to be able to get this done and make everybody happy. I really do. I really do.
One more thing. I would just like to, you know, so you know, we already had that corporate sponsorship going. We had businesses that had come to us and said, we want to contribute to this project that you're doing.
Can we do up?
Well, no, we didn't, we didn't take any money. I mean, I'm just telling you, we did have them, you know, they were working with us. They told us, you know, they had pledged money, but we never took it because we were instructed not to. So, you know, that, I just want you to know that we, that was part of our goal, to get that.
Okay, Bart, that we have clear direction.
Yes.
Moving right along. Home rental sales tax. I will entertain a motion to approve an ordinance imposing a non-home rental municipal retail occupation tax and non-home rental municipal service occupation tax in United City York from otherwise a Manhattan City tax. And it is Jeffy. Can I answer our questions, please?
Have we gotten anywhere with the question as to whether or not the sales tax is going to present opportunity for some property tax relief? And if so, when have we decided that'll happen?
It's being discussed at administration committee. It was discussed last month, and will be discussed again this month. It was discussed in June, will be discussed again in July.
Have any estimates as of this point now?
It depends on whether the council chooses to refinance, to what level. So it could be anywhere from five percent to ninety percent, depending on the direction given.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to touch on your question, George, we have discussed, and we will be proposing something out of amendment for that, so there's more to come on that. And there's, that was definitely our number-one goal, is tax relief on the next tax bill to the residents. They will see something, it's just a matter of how much. As far as this sales tax, I just want to clarify for everybody out there, because I don't like increasing taxes. This is the tax that you voted to increase. That's the only reason I'm voting for it. It's the one percent sales tax, we have to codify that into an ordinance, so that's why we're passing this. I just wanted that to be crystal clear.
Anyone else? Mr. Mayor, just, first of all, this takes effect January first, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I noticed we don't have a sunset clause in here, but, and I'm okay with that, but this is something we can revisit from time to time and make sure it's necessary. Absolutely. Okay. I think the reason for not having a sunset clause, because I asked the same thing when we passed it, was in order to refinance, we probably need to show a dedicated income stream. And with a sunset clause on it, we wouldn't have the ability to refinance some of these sewer bonds. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Spears?
Aye.
Klosimou?
Aye.
Hukazer?
Aye.
Mouschuske?
Aye.
Tealy?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
All right, okay, we will move on to our Public Works Committee report, and I will turn it over to our Public Works Committee Chairman.
Okay. PW, number one, this ordinance says it will allow EPA to issue a no further remediation letter to the property owner. Do we want to just discuss, or we want to present a motion and then discuss?
I would say a motion and then discuss. I mean, Mr. Williams is going to ask for a vote, up or down tonight, so.
Motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the eight oh two South Bridge Street groundwater ordinance. The ordinance would allow the EPA to issue a no further remediation letter to the property.
Second.
Comments, questions?
Was that so moved, and then a second?
No, I mean, you made the motion, you seconded it.
I have some questions. To, not to beat a damn horse as to what I've stated before about this, but I'm going to briefly state my position again related to this groundwater ordinance. My rub with this, once again, is the no further remediation letter, okay? The broken rust system, lack of responsibility on the state's behalf, there's sufficient funds available for the remediation, including the payment of the contractors who remediated. I just believe by voting yes to this, we're saying the system is broken, and that's okay. And I have a real issue with that. I also believe that we should err on the side of caution, and wait until IDOT comes through, and wait that year. And I'm sorry to hear about the financial woes of the property owner, but I just don't think the city council can take that responsibility on and push this thing through at the liability of the United City York phone taxpayers. So I believe, you know, we should, you know, I'm going to be voting no to approve this.
Mark?
Just got a question and a comment. In the memo dated April twentieth from our city engineer, it says here that by approving this ordinance, we're still eligible for the rust funding at a later date. However, I don't see that anywhere in the ordinance. Is that something that should be in there, or is it just not necessary?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I'm going to vote for this, and I'll tell you why. I think our risk is very minimal. We're in a situation where we can help a local businessman, and I think with this economy, that's very important. And with the road, if the road construction wasn't on the horizon here, hopefully, I think I'd have a different position on this, but as it stands, I'm going to support this. Chris?
After reading through this and going through some other correspondence between our staff and IDOT, really getting into some of the technical aspects of this and having some of the questions answered that were concerning me about our possible liability on this issue, I do think that we can work around those liability issues to an extent. I mean, we still may be exposing ourselves a little bit, the rust fund's broken, with our problems with the system, or which system in the state isn't broken. Part of this, I think, you know, being an obstructionist to our economic development, following the principles of what's right and wrong in terms of exposing ourselves, this is not a simple issue, because we are facing several issues. Do we go in the face of supporting our development, current business, or do we just try to protect our exposure on a piece of property or contaminator? So saying yes or no is rather tricky here. I'm leaning towards saying yes on this one, because the liability, as you read through this, some of that is mitigated to an extent. Our staff recommended that this be approved, which I do put a lot of thought behind our staff, and, you know, that's a good recommendation. So I do think that after reading this, having some solid answers, I will probably be voting in favor of this one as well.
Any others?
Well, I just want to say that I'm not going to vote in favor of it, because it appears that IDOT, once again, is going to be a key player in this when they widen the road, and I have no faith in IDOT. So unfortunately for the business, whatever, I think the city would be, does have liability risk, and then throw in IDOT, I can't support this.
The information that you gave us tonight, can I ask him a question? Information you gave us tonight about the industrial level of this contamination, is that what you were saying, that the dirt can just be thrown back into the hole?
That is correct. That's from the Hillon EPA engineer that Joe was back and forth with.
Okay.
And said, yes, it's industrial level, it's at that level of contamination, if you put it right back in the hole.
Okay.
Just to clarify that, though, Diane, you know, I'm familiar with this process. Just because you can take that dirt and throw it back in the hole, doesn't mean it's decontaminated, number one. And number two, it has bloomed. It has spread off the property and into the right-of-way. And whether it's industrial or it's of a greater level of contamination, it's still contamination, and there's still liability. So that's just to clear that up.
Yeah, actually, I think I'd like to hear what Jeff has to say.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Sure. I have gone through the documentation that was provided in the packet, as well as some other information. I did go ahead and pull out the Route Forty-seven improvement plans to get a better appreciation of where the existing utilities are for the city. And essentially, the property at the southeast corner of Route Forty-seven and Orange Street, you have, within the right-of-way, in the southern area of the right-of-way, is an existing storm sewer. That existing storm sewer is planned to be removed by IDOT. So likely, if they encounter any issues with the soil, they will have to dispose of it appropriately. Within the southern right-of-way, a little farther to the east, is a city sanitary sewer. That sanitary sewer is located right around the edge of the pavement, as near as I can tell. And in north right-of-way, you have the water main, which is close to the edge of the pavement as well. If there were issues with either the sanitary sewer or the water main, and Eric and his folks in Public Works knew to go out there and fix them by excavating, it's very likely that they will be into the roadway. When they're excavating within the roadway, it is very unlikely that they will backfill with the material that they excavate out. They would need to provide granular backfill that's compacted appropriately to provide the appropriate base for the road. Once they have that material out, and they need to dispose of it, if it is found that there might be an issue with it, there's a detector that will tell you if there's volatile organic compounds within that soil. If there is, then they have to do a waste characterization through sampling. That cost could be in the range of five to ten thousand dollars to characterize it. Then, if it is found that it needs to go to a special waste landfill, then it will need to be disposed in a special waste landfill. In another area of town, if it was considered regular construction debris, then likely it would be five to ten thousand dollars less as far as disposal goes. So from a technical perspective, you may never have to go into that right-of-way for a very long time. But at some point in the future, it's likely you'll have to be in there to fix one of those utilities, or ultimately replace it. And if you do that, based on the information that I have seen, it seems likely that you may encounter some contaminated soils that you'll have to deal with.
Are those the ones that are getting turned off? I mean, they're getting abandoned? They're going to be abandoned? No.
Not the water main. The storm sewer's the only one getting abandoned.
Correct. The water main, as part of Route Forty-seven improvement plans, they're putting in a casing underneath the road. Right now, the water main is just underneath the road. So with the new construction, they're putting a casing in out in the Route Forty-seven pavement. And then there is an area to the east of Forty-seven, in the northern portion of Orange Street, that new water main will be going in, five to ten feet north of the existing water main. And then it comes south and connects to the existing water main that's already there on the north side of Orange Street. They are abandoning a portion of the sanitary sewer. There's a manhole out in the middle of Route Forty-seven that's not totally sure why it was put there, but it heads to the east to another manhole that's on the eastern portion of their property, or north of their property line. They're abandoning that section from the center of Route Forty-seven over to that manhole as part of the project, but they're not planning to excavate for that, they're abandoning it in place. So likely, there won't be any issues with that. The storm sewer right south of that, though, based on the plans, looking at them today in their nine hundred and some pages, they are planning to remove the storm sewer that's there, so they'll have to excavate that out.
Because IDOT's doing that, though.
IDOT's doing the storm sewer. They are, as part of the contracting, the water main and sanitary sewer as well, but as perhaps you already know, those type of improvements in some locations are at the city expense. I believe in that location for the water main, it may be under IDOT's expense, but if it's under the city's expense, and there's additional cost to deal with utilities at other portions throughout the project, it's very likely that that could be passed through.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, go ahead, roll call, vote.
Spears?
Aye.
Klosimou?
Aye.
Hukazer?
Yes.
Mouschuske?
Aye.
Tealy?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, the motion passes. Okay, bear with me here. Next item is safe route to school sidewalk easements.
Okay. Safe route to school sidewalk improvement, motion to propose permanent easements, OC's motion to, hold on, please. I just say motion to propose approving the sidewalk easements.
Motion to approve grants of permanent sidewalk easement agreements for the properties located at six oh two, six oh six, six oh eight, and seven oh two Houston Street, and authorize a more city tax.
It's right here.
Second. You all need a motion.
Second.
Still haven't.
Mouschuske.
This is. Oh, here, it's in here. Okay, okay.
Yeah. I was looking at that.
The noise you heard was the camera person rubbing your camera.
And roll call up. Okay, we have a motion, time to second. Any comments, questions on safe route to school sidewalk easements? Yes, Mary?
I'm really glad that these people are getting their, new sidewalks are really bad in that area. And it does go right to the schools, so I'm happy that it's good. That you will have nice new sidewalks to walk to work on.
Dave?
At Public Works, you were asking a question about the width.
Yeah, the width of these sidewalks is going to be wider than the standard sidewalk.
Okay.
But it has to be that way because of the grant.
Okay, I did find out that it has to do with the ADA American Swip Disabilities Act, because there's not some driveways, I don't know, it's just the way it has to be.
Anyone else on Safe Routes? Roll call, please.
Klosimov?
Aye.
Hunkhazer?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, aggressive energy was tabled. Next is downtown parking lot status update and alternative analysis. Informational item, always looking to get some direction on this. As everyone knows, we had the parking lot found that was going to go by the old jail. Some downtown business owners contacted us, brought us to take a second look at it. They didn't think that the parking lot at the old jail really benefited them all that much. They wanted us to explore alternatives. I did go to committee, and it was just for a bit to get everybody's input on it.
My input on it to this point, I think we, at this point, what we're talking about is choosing to wait. And if we wait, you know, how that would affect the businesses in terms of having no parking. You know, I guess at this point, I'd like to solicit those businesses, I think we heard from three at the committee level, solicit them again and find out if we do wait and there is no parking, how they feel about that. Because back to proposal number one, which is the old jail parking lot, I just believe that it's not going to be of any practical relief. I really don't. And I don't think, you know, to the businesses or really in terms of usage for that, for the future. So I don't see that as a viable alternative. So I'd like to, I'd like for someone to talk to the businesses and see how they feel about, about us waiting.
I did talk to one before the meeting. And again, they still weren't crazy about the old jail parking, but they did want parking this year, if at all possible. My comment was, I mean, take away the parking, don't come in with them, better as well shut my doors.
So what's the alternative at this point?
For this year, there really isn't an alternative. I mean, we can try and go and acquire a different parcel. I just can't guarantee that we're going to be able to acquire it, engineer it, and construct it this year. So if the decision is made that we have to have parking by the end of this calendar year, it has to be the old jail. If we're okay with not, then we do have a lot of options.
The concern I have with the old jail parking lot is really the grade and how steep it is. I mean, you know, we're trying to encourage individuals to come into the downtown area, go eat, go shopping. That's absolutely what we want to do. But I don't want to rush into this parking structure on this such a grade. First of all, there's going to be a retention wall, which obviously is going to add costs and future maintenance. But, I mean, how's the senior citizen going to come down this? I mean, I can't even walk down that hill. I like to think I'm kind of healthy. And I mean, 20, 30 years from now, there's no way I'm walking down that hill. So that's my concern, really. It's really the grade of that hill, not necessarily the location. I'm just going to throw it out there, but what about some sort of temporary leasing agreement with Old Second for their parking area? There's this huge parking lot sitting there, empty, with a chain across the entrance. Can we contact the owners, maybe work out some sort of leasing agreement to temporarily lease that lot?
I don't believe lease acquisitions were allowed for funding. So if we did that, we would have to do that at our own cost, and whatever we wanted to improve upon it, we'd be done at our own cost.
Well, I think if it's rushing into a parking garage, it's going to be very difficult for half of our population to use. Delaying a parking structure that's going to be used by 100% of the people for one year, I know it's going to be difficult in the short term for the local businesses, but in the long term, that they're going, that they're going to gain from a better parking structure. So I, my recommendation would be that we do not build a parking lot by the, by the old jail, and really move to, to get this done in the next construction season.
I still think that we will have a problem with IDOT. I mean, you know, according to the memo, we, this hasn't been formally set okay by IDOT. I mean, I think they gave us that money to buy this property and, they gave us the money to buy the property, and I think by not doing with the property what we, we got the money for, is a form of misappropriation, and they're going to want it back. They're going to want that money back because we used that money that they gave us to buy this property to build a parking lot. We can't just, I mean, I don't believe that IDOT is going to say, it's okay, you can have it.
We wouldn't spend money unless they did say okay, because there wouldn't be any misappropriation there. They have told us that, I think the agreement even contemplates a 2015 construction date. So they said there's no issue till then, and even then, they would be okay with an extension, is what they've told me.
No, I'm not saying, you know, if we extend the time that we build this parking lot, but I'm just saying, I think we're going to have to pay them back for that money that they spent on the, on the old jail. I believe that we will have to pay that back. I don't think they're just going to say, I mean, we told them, we had an agreement with them that would purchase this property to put in the parking lot, and now we're saying, but we don't want the parking lot there, but they already expended the money there. So they're not going to just, I just don't think that they're going to let us off the hook for paying them back. And I don't know if we have an answer on that.
They threatened it. You know, the logic behind the switching the project would be, if we have $400,000, let's say, left over to the project, and we can acquire another parcel, engineer another parking lot, and then construct it for less than $400,000, wouldn't it be an appropriate use of taxpayer dollars to do so? And, you know, they said, well, yes, that makes sense, but, you know, it's outside of our normal processes, so we'd have to, you know, go through and study it and then analyze it and make a decision. So, you know, and, because the alternative is, is if they say, sure, you know, you can do that, but you have to pay us back for the old jail acquisition, well, to me, then, you know, the argument is pretty easy because we don't have the money to repay that property acquisition. So, you know, then we would just go forward with the old jail parking lot. So I think we're in the driver's seat right now in this particular conversation.
I think so, I don't.
What's the timeline on availability of the funding? I know we have our $600,000,000. I know they'd like to move forward with that at the same time they move the Route 47 project. Is there a cutoff on our funding for agreement?
Somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the agreement contemplates that it's available through 2015, you know, it just has to be constructed by then, but they were open to extensions.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? So direction is, let's get this right.
Okay, so we will continue to study it at Public Works, alternatives, whether construction of a lot or other arrangements. And we will let our engineering consultants know that we will be ceasing engineering design on this for now.
So what is the very earliest, do you think they will lose parking in front of downtown businesses?
We probably won't know for sure until December. That's when the letting actually occurs. So, you know, as part of the letting, they're going to give us a construction timeline.
What is the idea where they're starting the construction? Are they starting down at 71 or what?
I believe that downtown is the first phase.
Downtown is phase one?
So it could be as early as, you know, mid-2012. So is there a chance that, you know, we could rush a spring construction and get it in? Maybe, but not for me to decide.
All right, moving forward, Economic Development Committee report.
Let us sir, I'd like to make a motion authorizing a text amendment to zoning code regarding dormant zoning applications and/or provision.
Still moved?
Second. Okay, explanation, Kristy could kind of fill in what we needed to do.
I'll just give you a background. Staff had gone through some dormant applications for developments, and there were about 30. And we had fees for about $110,000 in deposits and engineering deposits and legal deposits. With these accounts being dormant over two, three, four, five years, it was prudent for us to release these funds, to ask these applicants, were they moving forward with the projects or not? So we've been doing that to clean up the books. But we need an ordinance or a policy in place that will allow staff to do that once an application goes stale, we have no more communication with the developer, we don't want to hold development deposit money in perpetuity. So this would allow staff to do that, you know, after a period of time with no response. So we're just asking for this to go to Plan Commission for a public hearing, it'll come back to City Council for formal approval.
I don't know, ask.
Would this be a part of the zoning code?
Yes, it will. It'll be amendment to the zoning code, so it'll be spelled out in the zoning code.
Is the ordinance demanding the deposits in the first place a part of the zoning code?
Yes, it is.
Aye, okay.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Klosimov?
Aye.
Hunkhazer?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next is a motion to approve a DOC 3 resolution of authorization to apply for an Ozlet grant for Riverfront Park, authorize a mayor and city clerk to execute. I'll move.
Second.
Amendments, questions? This is before us on last meeting. George?
According to the memo, and correct me if I'm mistaken, even with the forced labor and design fees, we're looking at an additional contribution of $285,000. Is that correct or is that incorrect?
That's incorrect. $285,000 is the amount that we would be contributing in land. So there's a gap there, but we're making it up with the land.
Okay, that was my next question, that we will be, we'll be doing, using a land contribution for that. So we're being, putting out no money from the, so it'll be done off portion of the forced labor and land contribution. Okay. That was my question. I appreciate it. Oh, I have one more question. On the memo, it says, state has not yet allocated, what here? Something about, oh, grant applications are due by July 1st, and says, we, staff is planning to speak to IDNR and Vanna in Mr. Esprah to July 9th. Is that a misstatement? I mean, why would we speak, if it's due by July 1st, we'd be talking to them well before July 1st or 9th, correct?
That was probably a typo. It should have been June 9th, I'm assuming.
June 9th, okay.
We did speak with IDNR. The, the state funds, they haven't allocated a specific amount. Last year, they did $11 million, the year before, they did $21 million for outside grants. And typically, we know how much is out there to know if we have a better chance of getting the funds, and the state hasn't set a certain amount yet.
So applications, Laura, are due when?
Thursday.
July 1st?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to be talking to them pretty quickly now?
Well, we already did talk to them, but there's still no money allotted right now. They are accepting applications, and so you just, you know, apply and hope that they, they allocate enough funds for us to receive a grant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Muntz?
Spears?
Aye.
Klosimov?
Aye.
Hunkhazer?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, any Plan Commission, Sound Board of Appeals report?
No.
City Council report? No reports. City Clerk's report?
No reports.
City Treasurer's report?
No.
Community liaison report? Any community or liaison reports? Vote.
I have just a quick one. This Thursday, June 30th, from 9 until 6:30 PM, it's going to be held right here in the City Hall. What we're doing, what they are doing, is they're going to have a comparison demonstration of homes equipped with fire sprinklers and homes that are not equipped with fire sprinklers. And what they do is, the way I saw this a couple of years ago, is they set up a trailer with two identical furnished rooms, and one room has fire sprinklers, the other does not. So they have a candle there and the curtains kept on fire, and this is like so interesting. But it does show the importance of having fire sprinklers in your home. And if it wasn't so costly at this time to update my home, I certainly would go ahead with the sprinklers. And also, children are welcome to come. I think that they would be rather interested in this demonstration. And our fire department, of course, will be there with fire extinguishers, and I hope that our council members will be able to attend. I invited the trustees and village president of Oswego, and I have heard from a couple that will be attending. I also invited the trustees that I know from Plano and the council members with Plano. So I think if everybody gets on board and does witness this demonstration, it would be beneficial to our city, right now updating our codes. And again, it's this Thursday, June 30th, and it begins at 5 o'clock and goes on until 6:30, and it's going to be held right behind, the demonstration will be right behind City Hall.
Can I just add something to that, Rose? That's part of staff's building code update open house, so it's not just the fire demonstration, it's all the codes that we are intending to adopt, the 2009 international codes. You can come out and inspect the codes. There's going to be a roundtable discussion of the proposed amendments, and officials from all capacities, from fire to building safety to engineering mechanical, so feel free to come out and ask questions.
Okay, any other community or liaison reports? Okay, moving on. Staff reports. And I will run our chief of police go, who has been chopping at the bit, to tell us all about this new motorcycle here.
Thank you, Your Honor. As everybody can see, we've got a brand new Merle Davidson 2011 police electric ride motorcycle up front. This has been a long time in the works. Probably four or five years ago, a few of our officers wanted to start a motorcycle and it never really gained any traction. The last year has been, you know, we've been trying to come up with a lot of alternatives to keep a lot of those old vehicle prices. And during a meeting with command staff, we were doing some serious brainstorming, and the motorcycle popped up again. And a funding source for the motorcycle ended up being our drug asset forfeiture fund. In that fund, we have monies that we can spend on very limited items, and one of the items is vehicles. And so put our brains to- with two identical furnished rooms, and one room has fire sprinklers, the other does not. So they have a candle there, and the curtains kept on fire, and this is like so interesting. But it does show the importance of having fire sprinklers in your home. And if it wasn't so costly at this time to update my home, I certainly would go ahead with the sprinklers. And also, children are welcome to come. I think that they would be rather interested in this demonstration. And our fire department, of course, will be there with fire extinguishers, and I hope that our council members will be able to attend. I invited the trustees and village president of Oswego, and I have heard from a couple that will be attending. I also invited the trustees that I know from Plano and our council members with Plano. So I think if everybody gets on board and does witness this demonstration, it would be beneficial to our city, right now updating our codes. And again, it's this Thursday, June 30th, and it begins at 5 o'clock and goes on until 6:30, and it's going to be held right behind, the demonstration will be right behind City Hall.
Can I just add something to that, Rose? That's part of staff's building code update, open house, so it's not just the fire demonstration, it's all the codes that we are intending to adopt, the 2009 international codes. You can come out and inspect the codes. There's going to be a roundtable discussion of the proposed amendments, and officials from all capacities, from fire to building safety to engineering mechanical, so feel free to come out and ask questions.
Okay, any other community or liaison reports? Okay, moving on. Staff reports. And I will run our Chief of Police, Gob, who has been chopping at the bit, telling us all about this new motorcycle here.
Thank you, Your Honor. As everybody can see, we've got a brand-new Harley-Davidson 2011 police electric ride motorcycle up front. This has been a long time in the works. Probably four or five years ago, a few of our officers wanted to start a motorcycle and it never really gained any traction. The last year, as many of you know, we've been trying to come up with a lot of alternatives to resolve the vehicle prices. And during a meeting with command staff, we were doing some serious brainstorming, and the motorcycle popped up again. And a funding source for the motorcycles ended up being our Drug Asset Forfeiture Fund. In that fund, we have monies that we can spend on very limited items, and one of the items is vehicles. And so, put our brains together, we figured out we could buy these, or lease these motorcycles, we can pay for the training and pay for all the equipment, and learn the drug funds. It'll cost taxpayers plenty. The only thing that'll cost the taxpayers money in the motorcycles are the gasing that goes into them, and the salaries of the officers that sit on them. So we're going to try them out for a one-year lease, we can extend that to a two-year lease if we so choose. We've got one more that should be out by the end of the week, and we're hoping by Friday we can have this thing striped up for the parade on Monday. But the second item of this is, is a valid argument of the police department, we can ride. I have my license, so, you know, although my doctor's a little dreary about it now, I promised a year ago I wouldn't ride anymore, but I know Deputy Chief Hilt over here, he wants to, he wants to ride on the parade. As a matter of fact, Deputy Chief Hilt's the one that did most of the background work on the labor, giving these things to us tonight. I really look forward to these as an incredible tool for the community. My vision is, is that, you know, when the officer get the gas, gas, before they come up and talk about the motorcycle, they pull up in the parks, the kids are playing, the kids are in front of the motorcycle, as well as any kind of community that's going on, I see this as a great tool. The officers, most police departments use these for traffic unit, we're not, we're going to use it for general patrol. If the patrolmen that get qualified to drive these motorcycles, want to take them out for their 12-hour shift, they can have a day of it. You know, they can go out and do what they normally do on their shift, or if they want to split, you know, a couple hours of the motorcycle, and the rest of the time in their police car. So we're really looking forward to the program. I know at least six or seven months out of the year, we'll be using them. The county over here claims they use them for nine months out of the year. That's a little...
If anybody will need a motorcycle for 102, there is a lot of it, so I'm not sure I'm using quite yet, so. You can pop the light side, Ranger. Pop the light side.
You should see how many miles it's allowed now, so. It's got 44 miles on it, if you pull it up in here. We just picked it up about 3:00, 7:00 mile, and Deputy Chief Hilt drove it in.
The other good thing, the gas savings, driving that around.
Yeah, absolutely.
I haven't gotten the exact gas mileage yet, but...
40, 45 miles.
We figured about 45, 50 miles, we got some...
All that stuff. That looks like a whole pack of...
I can say, you know, with motorcycles, the working usually weight each other on motorcycles, they're all second looking at him today when they drive way away, it's like a police bike.
Very cool, great work, guys. Great work. As far as the parade, I thought you guys told me the mayor could handle it. Any other staff in Portsmouth?
No report.
Any additional business? Since they did bring up, since they did bring up the parade on 4th of July, city does have a float, everyone and their families are welcome to walk with the city council on the float, we're walking, I mean, the float isn't giant, so those that are able to watch probably watch, but feel free to join the city and the float this year. What kind of decoration? Do you have decorating? I have, we have decorated from four years ago. I mean, it still has the banner, city council, and staff's jersey, going a couple families on the road. So, looks pretty good. Line up behind high school. Behind high school, right. And nobody told them what a police vehicle, one of the police blazers. And I didn't line up at 7, 7:30.
The sooner it starts, the earlier the better. I'll reserve a spot for it.
Line up, that was a little rough for them. Yeah. We'll be there by nearly.
George? Two things, I could have done one of these under community, I guess I figured I'd do them both together under additional business. The first thing was, Mr. and Mrs. Peterson, who were here earlier, and this is for you, Eric, had, we've talked about that drainage area that's been an ongoing source of issue for us, but they had mentioned that the water that comes through that is actually not just going through the carpet, but going underneath the carpet.
Yeah, it's black.
Okay, so you knew about that, and is there any, is that going to cause any erosion under the road?
We'll have to go back in there and push it back out and put the stone over the top. It's just following the gravel channel that we've got a pipe.
Okay, okay. So is that, are we going to fix that this year?
Wait.
Okay, okay. And then the other thing that, that I had was, oh, just a point of discussion, I've received many, many, many phone calls, and many, many, many emails, all in an outcry and an outpour from our constituents to keep this garbage the way it is. So I did want to state that today. If anybody feels differently, please call me, please email me, but as of right now, this has been a hot topic, and I've received a lot of, a lot of contact from constituents saying, "Keep it as is with the container system." Okay? Thank you.
I got a complaint on Ahistas and Van Emon by the mill. They now have a sign poster for Firewood. If you're coming into town, it makes it a little bit harder sightline. It's bad enough, but you have to get off or look. So I didn't know if somebody could, see if we can get that moved before somebody has an accident there, because you have to pull way into the intersection to get past it to see if anybody's coming up from the river.
We can check that. We have intersection visibility requirements.
Yeah, so I got a call, that somebody complained about it.
Any additional business? All righty, a little bit.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, I just wanted to tell you what George said. Every single phone call that I've gotten has been exactly the same, "Don't mess with our garbage." I guess they're happy with the service, they're happy with the way it is. I've gotten very much anti-sticker feedback from the residents. So really, at this point, to me, it's a matter of price. We need to negotiate and see what different companies are, to what offer the price for this type of service, and the residents seem to be very happy with it, so.
Rose?
I just want to add, I've also got probably as much choice as we did in the landfills. I mean, people are just, I was surprised and overwhelmed. But my point is, why was this discussed in administration and then discussed in another committee? I don't understand that. I mean, being a contract, I would think it belongs in administration.
I think it was discussed last time at Public Works, when we were talking about commercial solid waste franchise agreements. So it can go to whichever committee the city council, you know, deems fit.
Okay. If it's far back, I'd like to know which committee, because these people want to attend the meeting.
I agree.
What is it scheduled, which, what was it, actually, at Public Works, that they're coming back to Public Works?
Correct. They directed us to research sticker prices in surrounding communities, and to see if we couldn't entertain an offer from our existing hauler on the existing program, and then perhaps with some recommendations for service cuts, to actually bring the price down. So we were going to present that on July, I think it's 19.
So again, my question is, how did it get to two sub? It was in administration the week before.
It was. Well, and it was already, it was, the week before was in, and we had a table, we were going to discuss it at the next administration meeting, so.
The conversation at admin was related to the senior garbage subsidy.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And that's, somebody had put it on the agenda, because it's part of the city code, and was part of a, might have been part of a budget discussion. So we hadn't actually talked about the garbage contract in a few years, so.
I would also like to suggest we put that in admin, though I think that's more of an admin item, if anybody's not opposed to that.
I would support that.
I'm not opposed to it, but I have one request.
Okay.
The Green Committee called me, and they have a lot, you know, they would like to come in and talk to about the, about the programs that we have, and, you know, just give their input, if they could be put on as a presentation or something, on whatever committee it goes to.
Okay.
Put him on admin, yeah.
Since I have all eight aldermen here, is it the direction to remove the garbage contract from the Public Works Committee agenda and put it on admin, or do you want to go to both, or three or four?
It's confusing when it goes to both. I think it's always been with admin.
Admin.
And there is one additional thing. All of the additional committees that we have, human resources, whatever, previously, they would come to council annually and give us a report on what they're accomplishing, or what they need, and just an update. And I'd like to see that come back to us again.
Sure.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Then then I would like to, one more thing, now that the mine is taken, and then I'll be done. But as far as liaison for various different committees and the different things they attend, I'd like to see us get reports again. You know, updates and reports that I don't think we've been receiving.
Have we done our liaison appointments?
I think we have.
Two more things. One, I agree with George, I've got calls on it, too, and it is part of what we have, and everybody likes the company we have. Two, is anything happening with the old jail? Has anybody been working on it, or are we with it?
Yeah, there's about $6,000 in funds left over from the haunted house. There's been a group of volunteers that have expended a small amount of money, a couple hundred dollars, on paint, window repairs, and they have been there from weekend to weekend, doing minor work.
Thanks.
Any other additional business? All righty, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for employment, purchase, or lease of real property, and pending a possible litigation.
Still moved?
Second. Roll call. George?
Purchase and sale of real estate.
Purchase or, purchase, sale, or lease. Roll call, please.
Steer?
Aye.
Melchuski?
Aye.
Klosinov?
Aye.